Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, March 4th, 2025 work session. First, I'd like to start by welcoming Commissioner Glover and in his absence, Commissioner Johnson. Thank you all for serving the city, and we look forward to all the contributions you all will make. Dr. Russell, would you like to get it started?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today for the March 4th Planning Commission Work Session. We have one formal agenda item this afternoon, Chesapeake Bay Exception Request 2501. It's a request by Mr. Gordon for an exception to add an addition to his home and some recreational improvements. Mrs. Valerie Malzone is going to do the staff presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name's Valerie Malzone. I'm a senior planner for the City of Portsmouth. The application before you today is a Chesapeake Bay Exception Request to construct a rear addition, a swimming pool, and a deck within the Resource Protection Area, or RPA, at 5998 Eagle Point. The Resource Protection Area on the subject property consists of tidal wetlands and a landward 100-foot buffer, which is further divided into a 50-foot seaward and a 50-foot landward buffer. Development within the Resource Protection Area is regulated by Chapter 9.1 of the Portsmouth City Code and the Virginia State Code. The proposed encroachment of both the addition to the principal structure and the accessory structures into the RPA on the subject property are not permitted, allowable or exempt under Code Section 9.1-10(c). However, the Chesapeake Bay Exception may be applied for its authorized an exception from these requirements for approval by Planning Commission should Planning Commission find that the request meets the required development criteria. The approval of an Exception Request must be based upon the making of certain findings. The first being that the request is the minimum necessary to afford relief. This can be applicable to, but is not limited to, the size, type, or placement of a proposed structure. The second, the Exception Request must not be based upon conditions that are self-created or self-imposed. Third, granting the Exception Request does not confer upon the applicant any privileges that are denied to other property owners within the RPA. The request must be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Ordinance. And lastly, if approved, reasonable and appropriate conditions must be imposed, which will prevent the request from causing a degradation of water quality. If appropriate, the Commission may also request an amendment of the applicant's submittal to allow for a proposal that meets the intent of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance. The property at 5998 Eagle Point is approximately .6 acres in size and is a zonal conditional general residential, or GRK. The lot contains a 2,000-square-foot single-family dwelling that was constructed in 2002. The 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer extends into the property from Hoffler Creek at the north, and approximately 80% of the property is located in the RPA. The lot was legally recorded in 1997 between the adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act in 1989 and the adoption of amendments to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Designation and Management Regulations in 2002. This is relevant as there are additional opportunities for administrative relief for the requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Ordinance for properties legally recorded prior to 1989. Those are typically what you see as most properties in Portsmouth are legally recorded prior to 1989. So you may be used to principal structures being allowed administratively in the RPA, but for this, you'll be reviewing the addition to the principal structure, the swimming pool, and the deck. The subject property is surrounded to the south, east, and west by single-family residential properties that are also zoned conditional general residential. Hoffler Creek abuts the property to the north. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-story rear addition, a wooden deck, and a 14-foot-by-28-foot in-ground swimming pool with a concrete apron to the rear of the existing single-family dwelling. The addition will be partially constructed over the footprint of an existing wooden deck, which will be removed and will therefore result in a net increase of 300 square feet of impervious area within the RPA. The proposed wooden deck and in-ground swimming pool will result in a net increase of 1,298 square feet of impervious area within the RPA. No land disturbance is proposed in the 50-foot seaward portion of the RPA. All of the proposed development is in the 50-foot landward portion of the RPA. The proposed development will result in a total of 1,895 square feet of land disturbance within the RPA, which the applicant is proposing to mitigate by establishing five planting units on the property. Staff is recommending the approval of the addition to the principal structure only. With the recommended conditions, the proposed addition meets all review standards and supports the preservation of the Resource Protection Area while allowing for the development and maintenance of a principal structure and necessary utilities. Staff is unable to support the development of the in-ground swimming pool and deck within the RPA as the proposal does not meet all of the necessary review standards. Staff finds that the proposed accessory structures are not in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance and are not the minimum necessary to afford relief. Should Planning Commission approve this request, staff has proposed several conditions to ensure that the development minimizes the impacts to water quality. To date, the planning department has not received any public comments regarding this application. The applicant has provided additional site photos that he may reference during his presentation, and they've been distributed to everybody prior to the meeting. And this concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Yes, Commissioner.
In regards to the swimming pool, was there any way to reconfigure it so that the pool would be in compliance?
Um, there might be. So that would be up to the Commission to decide. We don't see any sort of obvious alternate location as we have in some past requests outside of the RPA. If some of the backyard was perhaps completely outside of the RPA, we may reference an alternative location. In this case, planning staff's recommendation was based predominantly on the size and not the proposed location.
Thank you.
Just a question.
What about the size concerns you all? Was it just if it was to downpour, that there would be more runoff from the pool?
Yeah, so the size, we consider a pool to be impervious area even though it's filled with water because it's not filtering the non-point source pollution through the ground. So we're looking at the reduction in width of the riparian buffer. So the impervious surface extending toward the water, we're looking at that width.
And does the proposed deck that extends further into the RPA not provide, give you all concern as well about the runoff and whatnot?
You mean if a pool was overflowing?
Existing or...
I think to clarify, there's three different, three different changes happening with this request. There's the addition, the pool, and the deck. And the recommendation was you were okay with the addition, but not the deck or the pool.
Yeah, and the additions in the gray, black, and the pool is blue and the deck is brown.
Okay, so you're okay with the proposed addition?
Yes.
But not the deck and the pool?
Correct.
Okay, understood now. Okay. And that deck, that proposed addition doesn't give you all any concerns?
Um, so for, in the intent of the ordinance, they provide for a principal structure and necessary utilities. So when you're looking, when we're looking at a request, a principal structure and necessary utilities take precedence over an accessory structure, and they're sort of weighed differently. So if there was an alternative placement outside of the RPA for the addition, that's where we would talk about, you know, reducing that or moving that. It really looks like, you know, staying within the footprint of the house, that that would be the minimum necessary to come off the back. I mean, I guess if the pool and the deck were not there, you could kind of turn it to the other side of the house. But the principal structure and accessory structures are just weighted differently.
Okay, so no impact, no minimal impact to the environment and the growth that will occur there with this addition?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioners?
I do. Was the additional concern beyond the obvious because with the pool, you normally have chemicals that you place in the pool. So if something were to happen and the water would overflow or whatever, then that's the concern as to how it would impact the environment. Is that, is that, is that the concern you would say?
No, not completely. So it's multifaceted. So that would be one, I suppose, using those chemicals in that property. Another, you have high foot traffic around a pool that would, you know, possibly degrade the vegetation. The largest one that we're considering is when you put impervious area over the porous ground in the RPA. Runoff, it's not being filtered through the porous ground and the vegetation anymore. It's a, it's just running off, and it increases the velocity of stormwater and, you know, how many pollutants are taken out of it. So anytime you add impervious area to that area, you're reducing the function of the riparian buffer to filter the sediments. So it has to do with the pavement and the covering of the ground.
But it is in like the back by the woods. Okay, thank you.
One question on my side. So there were no other improvements offered by the applicant, like no vegetation, nothing to offset?
So this is the mitigation.
Okay, that was the vegetation.
All of the colorful trees are, well, I guess they don't have the existing tree shed, but it is rather wooded.
Yeah.
But they're gonna fill in with these additional. So these are all additional to what is there now.
Oh, those are all additional. Okay. I feel like my vice chair has a thought question. I can feel it.
I have a question. Help me understand the objection to the deck. If you're okay with the addition, I'm looking at the footprint of a deck, and that's 27 and a half feet by 12, whatever it is. You're looking at footers for a deck, and it's a wooden deck. So help me understand the objection to that.
Uh, yes, it's mostly the fact that it's an accessory structure. So the addition, when we're looking at what is the minimum necessary to afford relief, you know, we allow larger encroachments for the principal structure for accessory structures. In the past, they're not considered the necessary to afford relief for a principal dwelling and necessary utilities. So we kind of weigh accessory structures differently in that we would want it to see, we would still want them to be the minimum necessary. But as far as like their size relative to each other, we typically allow additions to be larger because they're living space for the principal structure.
Okay, you still haven't explained to me what's the objection of, I get that...
Oh, the objection to the deck specifically.
Yeah, what, what's the downside of that? What's the negative impact of that deck?
It's the size. It's increasing runoff in an area that would typically be vegetated. So you now have wood there, so it's not filtering next to the water as much as it would be if it was unencumbered.
If you go back to the beginning pictures of the deck, it didn't look like there was any vegetation around the existing deck. In the proposal, there's vegetation all the way around the new deck. And my question is if they put ground cover underneath the deck and those additional plants, that to me would be an improvement over what they have now.
Yeah, yeah, and I definitely see what you're coming from, and, you know, that's, that's why these come to play. If you feel the, one of the review standards, the last one, I believe, is what you would be referring to, and that would be your reasonable and appropriate condition to prevent the degradation. Yeah.
I have an additional question. To your knowledge, are there other, because this is in the backyard. Are there other property owners in that area who also have pools? Because I'm more concerned about the pool.
Yeah, yeah, so right next door, you'll see there's a pool. This one was permitted in 2006 before a major amendment of our Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Ordinance in 2009.
That's a nice-sized pool.
Yeah, so that one was able to be approved administratively and did not need to go through this process. But that was, you know, the restrictions from the state have gotten stricter since then, and we have to incorporate them into our local guidance.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Great discussion. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I also want to take this opportunity to welcome Commissioner Johnson.
Hi, thanks.
Thank you for joining us today. We look forward to working with you. No worries. We all, trust me.
The garage downstairs, the doors are locked on both sides, so...
I didn't make careful, so...
I feel your pain.
No interruptions. Okay, Dr. Russell, I believe, for that.
Yes, so just for the benefit of our new Commissioners, the work session is where you, staff shares the staff recommendation for your action items with you, and the applicants, I believe they're in the back of these are? Yes, will get to present their case during the actual meeting. So, Mr. Chair, if, with your permission, can we do the zoning administrator's presentation of the March agenda items?
Yes, please.
For the training session? Okay, thank you. I'm not sure what's next for... There we go. Thank you.
Perfect.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Trevon Boom, zoning administrator for the City of Portsmouth.
Thank you, Mr. Boom.
Pursuant to Section 15.2-2310 of the Virginia Code, the zoning administrator shall notify his local planning commission of applications received for special exceptions and variances. The planning commission may send a recommendation to the board of, to the board to appear as a party at the hearing. We have one agenda item that's scheduled for a public hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals for March 26, 2025. The applicant is requesting a special exception per zoning ordinance Section 40.2-535, Subsection B, Subsection 13, to authorize a reduction of the minimum required interior side yard setbacks from seven feet to three feet to construct a detached single-family dwelling on a lot less than 30 feet in width at 1611 Holland Avenue. That's the only agenda item that we have for March.
Thank you. Ready for some education?
All right. All right, so I think we're gonna have exactly 30 minutes for your training opportunity. That'll give us about 10 minutes to move from this room to council chambers for our official meeting. And so...
Jesus calls. You got an answer? Tell him what you want. Tell him what you want.
Turn it off. I don't know why it came back on.
Okay, planning commissioners, at your January meeting, when you were queried about what other training opportunities you were interested in, we were asked to share with Commissioners information about the customer, the applicant's experience before they get to the meeting. And that was a, that was just a profound request, and we want to thank you for that and also share with you that you are our research and development lab for our Government 101 session and that. And so the feedback that we, we gather from you for this training, we're gonna continue to tweak that presentation for our citizens that participate in that process. We also asked for feedback from you from the January training relative to, you know, was it value-added? We got feedback from the manager and other staff members that were present. And one of the things that was just abundantly obvious is that we didn't have enough time, right? It was, it was, it felt rushed. It felt rushed to us as well. And so for that reason, we actually sent to you the complete presentation and staff notes in your advanced package. And the reason why we did that is because we want to focus our comments in this session on those applications and processes that you routinely see, okay? And those include the use permit applications, the rezoning applications. Recently, you've seen quite a few of the street name changes, both permanent and honorary. I think you've seen one or two street closure requests. So hopefully, in the 30 minutes that we have, we'll get through those. With your permission, I want to ask a question, but I'd also like to forego the Chesapeake Bay Exception Process because we went through the Chesapeake Bay process at your January meeting. Is that okay? So my question is, did that review help you in the presentation and understanding the elements of this, of this request that you're gonna act on a little bit later today? I hope it did.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, Ms. Malzone did not share, and so, you know, as planners and we all are proficient in the same body of work, but I don't do Chesapeake Bay a lot. But with that request, another issue was that the deck and the pool are getting closer to the environmental features on that lot, right? So I didn't hear you prescriptively say that, but that's a part of the recommendation? Yes. Go run it. So did a little bit of quick math earlier today. This is a WorkCloud found-out app that does this for free, and I thought it very concisely conveys this, the litany of activities that we are responsible for in the planning department. And so the planning commission really only sees about five of our regular routine activities. That's 30% of our work plan. But we support 1, 2, 3, 5 boards and commissions. The customers who primarily come into our office, the most frequent customer are customers that are seeking business licenses, licenses and zoning permits. And so that's a body of work that you don't see. But oftentimes, the applicants that appear before you will end up back in our office trying to secure those applications as well. And so I just think it's important that everybody is aware that, you know, we do a lot. We do a lot, and our body of work is actually very prescriptive and required by the Code of Virginia. The primary function of your planning organization is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. And just depending upon where I am in other communities, I had a planning commissioner that loved when I said this, and it said that my quiet and peaceful enjoyment of my property should not interfere with your quiet and peaceful enjoyment of your property, right? And so that's our enforcement piece of, of our work is just to, just make sure everybody is playing fairly, right? This slide most succinctly describes and provides a summary for the applicant experience, and that is what you asked for. So applicants actually come into contact with the planning department and planning staff members because they have some interest in developing their property or using their property in some way that is different from the current use. We have a process that I'm very proud of, and I've not experienced it before in my career, and it's called our Planning Assistance Program in the City of Portsmouth. And so we encourage applicants to submit all of their preliminary material in form, well, formally, it's a formal application, at no cost. And they'll sit down with the team that's responsible for evaluating that process, and we'll outline for them all of the opportunities, challenges, the timeframe for their application. And what we find is that they get, they submit better, more thorough applications in that, that process. So after planning assistance, applications are submitted and fees are paid. We tell applicants that our process that comes before you, when it goes well, takes about three months, right? And so when it doesn't go well, those are issues that come up through the evaluation process. And that might include the property is environmentally sensitive, and they need a wetlands delineation for, to identify their title, non-title, Chesapeake Bay buffer areas on their property because it's impactful. You just saw that that's impactful in terms of where they can actually place proposed improvements. When it doesn't go well, it can result, result in an application being withdrawn. You saw that with a recent request for outdoor advertising sign or moving forward with a recommendation to not support. I share with our team members that our expectation really is to try to present opportunities to resolve problems. Like, you know, no, no, no can be harsh because many of us, including myself, our most significant investment is our, our home, the property that we own. And so if we can identify and find a way to get applicants to yes, then we try very purposefully to do that. So in the review process, we maintain constant contact with the applicant to let them know the issues that we uncover in the evaluation process. And then one thing that we do that I think everybody's starting to embrace is that we meet a lot, right? So we have various levels of experience amongst our staff. We have some old timers, I'm an old timer, been in this since I graduated college in 1989. Mr. Lanfair joins me in terms of many, many years of experience. And then we have some young planners who have skill sets and capacities that are, I would say, new, that maybe we aren't necessarily as skilled in. And it's that collective thinking that improves the recommendations that we bring forward. Now, I'll share with you, we'll do that, and then we will still make a misstep because planning commissioners, I believe it was, it was, it was maybe fall, the Employment Center piece, we missed that in the evaluation of the Victory Boulevard property. If you remember that, it was the gentleman right here, you know? And I'm very competitive. I went back and I'm like, how did we do that, right? And so we could have had you all in that space contributing to that evaluation. That would have been positive as well. But we take that information, and it will influence subsequent requests that we have along that corridor. So that application review process is probably the longest cog in the wheel for our evaluation. Want to share with you that applicants never come into your space not knowing what our recommendation is. What we do is we want you to have it first, right? So if you get your staff report on a Friday, your staff, your advanced package, on that Monday, we're sending that advanced package to the applicant so that they know what the staff recommendation is. And I actually learned that very early in my career, that if you are confident as a professional in the information that you're putting forward, that you don't really have to game the system by making the applicant unaware of what your positions are and what your issues are. Go ahead and share it with them, right? Because there might be an opportunity to resolve those, okay? First public hearing is here with the planning commission. You develop a recommendation that is then forwarded to City Council. I think what's unique and interesting about our process for me, having worked at several communities, is that staff never makes a presentation to the City Council. And so all the information from a case for council members is gleaned from the council representative or council liaison that attends your meetings, the staff package, the, watching the planning commission meeting, and if they reach out to members of the staff or the manager regarding the case. So having said that, I am, I marvel at every meeting at the depth of understanding of the case and the case analysis when we don't, we don't make that presentation to them. Okay, so this is the planning assistance program that we talked about. We probably do about, I think, two to three planning assistance meetings a week, would you say? That's right. And we, we follow those meetings. Applicants can do them virtually, or they can come on-site, and we follow it with written correspondence outlining the feedback that we gave participants during those meetings. Okay, so our use permit process. Mr. Dobson, Ms. Thomas, missing somebody, Ms. Bryant?
We're already slightly...
Yeah, this conversation, so this is a R and D. Make sure I do this well.
Make sure I do this well, this time.
Better. And the use permit, the land use tool, when the zoning ordinance stipulates that a use is permitted in an underlying zoning designation with a use permit, then what that means is that it could be okay, but there might be site-specific conditions that need to be evaluated and mitigated with conditions to make it appropriate at that site. Okay? So the underlying assumption is that it's okay. Use permits, in terms of the evaluation process, planning commission, public hearing, city council, public hearing, and then, I'm going to go ahead and put it out here, hopefully it's, things are a little bit better now, our entertainment uses, use permit, right? Because some places, they're okay, but they're not okay everywhere. Resonings. Resonings are significant, not that use permits aren't significant, but it changes the underlying nature and what's permitted on a property. And so the assumption is not that every rezoning request is appropriate and could be appropriate because it might not be, right? They do convey with the land, so if someone could propose a zoning change with no limitations on use, and then the property is transferred, and anything under that underlying zoning designation is permitted. And so my professional opinion is that we need to evaluate those specific requests with a significant amount of rigor. All of our requests, use permits, street closures, rezonings, we are required by the Code of Virginia to notify adjacent, immediately adjacent property owners. We're required to place a sign on the property so that persons who pass that property are aware that something is going on. And then we post in the local paper and advertisement two weeks, two consecutive weeks, advising persons that this is going to be considered for a land use change. On top of that, we notify our civic associations of the proposed request, and we include that information in your package. It's verbatim, so it's not, that information is not massaged in any way whatsoever. And typically, persons who are opposed to a request will come before the planning commission or city council to share their opinion. So we don't have to interpret what is meant by comments of support or lack thereof. Okay, so you agree with me that we can move, we don't have to do this one? Okay. I'm going to do this one, and then I'm going to invite my team members to come help me. So there are a couple of processes that we require applicants to move through before their application is considered by the planning commission. So the certificate of appropriateness application process are for properties that are proposed for improvements or changes that are located in any of our historic districts, right? And so our DDC and our HPC may attach conditions to, changes to a house, changes to a storefront, that should be also incorporated in any conditions that the planning commission or city council consider. And so remember I said when things go well, the process is about three months, right? So, but if an application has to go through one of these processes, we're going to add four to six weeks to that as well because that has to occur before it would be, before the commissioners. Ms. Taylor, you good? Ms. Johnson, you good?
I'm good. Just can relate to the process.
Resident Realtor.
So our, we got street closures and name changes, and Ms. Branch has primarily coordinated those for our team members. Do you want to talk about these processes?
Sure.
Okay. I'm going to change seats with her.
All right, good afternoon.
Hello.
So a street closure typically involves vacating a street or alley or easement or right-of-way. In this particular case that we have here, it was heard back in, I believe, September of last year, it involved an unapproved right-of-way that they were consolidating this portion with the rest of the adjacent parcels. So in terms of requirements that we include, let's see. So these are just a list of the application requirements that are submitted along with, that we use to review the cases and make a recommendation from our department. And then, let's see. The next two involves, so this one is a street name change. This is a way to permanently change the official name of a city street. And then there's an alternative one that is an honorary street name designation. It does not change the official name of the street, but it's a way to honor individuals who've made a great impact to our community, and it's a secondary sign that goes above the traditional street name. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the other processes that we are prepared to discuss with you today include our community development block grant program, the applications that are considered by our Board of Zoning Appeals, which include variances as well as appeals, and special exceptions, which is the case that will be considered. Mark 26 is a special exception request. Want to let you know that we do have another honorary street name request that will be before you at your April meeting.
That application fee is for what?
This one?
$3.50?
It's a variance, it's a special exception.
Thank you.
Go back to there. What other processes would you like to discuss for the time we have left? Ms. Taylor, I'm sorry, but you, you're, when I, like, you're in my bullseye. You made the request for this, and I'm like, I just, I feel like you've got a question for me.
I honestly don't at the time. But I just thought it would be helpful to see what a regular person has to go through before it gets to us.
Yes.
Just a question, not about the process, but the planning assistance program?
Yes.
What percentage of applicants attend the assistance program compared to those that don't?
What percentage of them? Well, I would think, I'm going to defer to Ms. Malzone, but most do because we encourage it, right? Is that?
Yeah, I'd say almost probably 70%.
Okay, so it's pretty high.
At some point, sometimes it depends how early, sometimes very early in their process. Sometimes they'll just come in as they're getting their application materials together. Some people come in more than once, but at some point, probably three quarters will come in here.
And do they have a higher success than those who don't?
My question.
As far as approval, not necessarily, but they're aware of, I haven't tracked that, so the answer is I guess I don't have a definite answer for you. But I will say where they're successful is they usually have a higher rate of getting on the agenda that they plan to get on because we're not, oh, we don't have this, we need this, oh, we have this. So if they're aiming to get on the April agenda, I'd say they have a higher chance of getting on that agenda.
Okay.
I would ask in addition to that, how long have you all been doing that process?
Two and a half years.
That would track. I mean, so speaking as like an old fogey who is on their second round on the planning commission, you see a difference, especially like in what gets to us. I mean, in the past, it would be things that get to us, and we'd push it back, and you'd see a lot more deferrals or tabling than we see now. So, I mean, from that perspective, I can, without, without technical knowledge, without seeing the facts and figures, see an ROI on it from the perspective of the individuals having more complete packets and actually being able to speak to it. I think that's the other big thing, is in the past, we didn't have applicants actually present. The team actually presented in the actual sessions. So the, I can only imagine if I was to not know what I know and had to present one of these in there, I wouldn't know what to say. And I think most of our applicants do a pretty good job, especially compared to what I saw 10 years ago.
This is another question. So after the whole process where council approves of the proposed changes, how does the planning staff enforce those proposed changes? When here, the planning commission, we vote, goes to council, and that's all we see afterwards. We don't know what happens after the process. So is it the planning staff that enforces those, just to make sure that they're doing what they were approved to do, or is it just good heart with faith?
No, 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 no. That's an excellent question. And so then you have the fourth floor. So the fourth floor is all things permitting and development. And so after planning commission and council consider a project, it depends on what type of project it is, but more than likely, probably 99.9% of the time, they're going to have to go through a site plan review process where they, if you remember, Ms. Malzone's showed the plat of the house and the diagram for the location of the approval. So that underlying delineation was a site plan for that house that has to be reviewed for compliance with all local and state ordinances. And then after the site plan is reviewed and approved, the zoning approval is required. So assuming you have site plan approval, you're going to get zoning approval, right? And then the applicant can pull a building permit. So that's probably when you will see it again, right? When you're driving around in the community and you're saying, oh yeah, that was one of our projects that we reviewed. And so I use the example of a house, a single-family house, because that's the, I guess it could be an accessory structure like a garage, but those are the simplest, right? So if you have a non-residential development where it's commercial, where it's a storefront or a shopping center or manufacturing use or self-storage facility, that gets more involved in terms of, it's the same skill sets in terms of the review, it's just, it's, they're just more complicated projects, but it's the exact same thing. Your site plan review, your zoning review, you're pulling your building permit, right? And so the site plan process, I'm leaving out some pieces that are important. So you're going to have the team that is going to weigh in on that evaluation, is going to include our public works department, our public utilities department, our fire department, and about three, about three, we don't want more than three to have to come through that site plan review process, but some, it's five. You know, I saw one recently that was, it's been two years in the making, it's not us, right? Because, sometimes it could be us, but this time, it's not us because it's expensive, right? And so every time a new plan set is submitted by an applicant, they've incurred cost for that from their engineering and design partners. And, you know, it's, it can be a lot. Let me share a personal story with you. So I'm a city planner, right? Academic background, a YAC sort of guy. I lived in a home that had, the den was the fraud. And so as my kids got older, I didn't want their friends going upstairs to the den. So I built a den downstairs with exterior access, right? So they didn't have to come in the house at all. But I needed a variance for my side yard setback. And I found myself seeing some of the same stuff that people were saying, why do I need a site plan? Do you know how much that costs? Right? And I, it was hard to listen to. So I hired somebody like me to do that process for me, and I went nowhere near it. I didn't go to the meeting. I'm like, when it's done, let me know. Because it was, it was hard. It was like emotionally, and it was hard. And I'm talking about a rendition, you know? And so we, you know, and I think to have those experiences helps to, helps me and helps us to understand what our customers and clients are experiencing going through.
So I say...
I got a question. Are you finished?
So, let's just say apartment building, right? They're approved for 20 apartments, but they build 30. How does the planning commission enforce, like, would you all go out, go out there eventually to see if they actually adhered to what was?
There's inspections.
Building permit, he wouldn't get passed. For higher density than the underlying zoning likely permitted that, and there weren't conditions that prevented them from doing more.
Okay, so there's inspections, like you all said?
They would never get away with like 100 units, like, there's people checking, like, as the process is being built too.
The other question was the recommendation. I would recommend that once the applicants go through the entire process from planning department to the planning commissioners to city council, and a decision is made, it would be good to do a feedback survey with the applicant to find out what their perspective is, how the application process went. Because it's one thing, but you, if you're not, if you're not implementing from the prospect's point of view, then you lose ground. And that's when miscommunication can come in, or frustration, or when the applicant compares Portsmouth to other cities, what their perspective is. I would really recommend that we implement a feedback survey because you will garner a lot of information that you probably didn't even think about because you're really planning from the planning department's point of view. So that would just be my recommendation. I just wanted to make sure I got that in before we got back on this.
All right, make sure I get all of my commissioners. Ms. Johnson, you good?
Good.
Okay. Ms. Glover, you good?
Good.
Mr. Melvin? Ms. Jiggett?
Saying my piece.
I'm amazing.
Mr. G?
Always happy.
So councilman people, this is...
Ms. Matt, so if you go back to your process slide. Parallel to any particularly rezoning review because everybody needs to know, for instance, if you're getting ready to rezone, let's say you're going to build a new apartment complex. Before we change zoning to accommodate the developer, don't we need to know that the utilities are going to support, that the schools have capacity, that the police and fire don't have an issue with building in that location? So that suggests a site plan review happens all the way at the end, but isn't it really happening in parallel with everything else?
It doesn't have to, and we can't require that the applicant do that. Most, most do. We had Parker, I can't remember his last... Mark Parker, yeah. Didn't, he did a conceptual plan. But for a large-scale project professionally, I would include in the recommendation that there are many factors in the evaluation of the proposed development that we can't vet without a site plan, and that I would recommend that they do one or two things, defer to develop a site plan or include a condition that gives review of a conceptual before the project moves forward, but we can't require it. before the project moved forward, um, but we can't require it. And so, so when you say, is it required? The answer is no. It's not required. It's rec, it's highly recommended.
Okay. But if you don't have the, so, and it's the city engineer's office that does that review, right?
It's, they, they coordinate that review and it's an interdepartmental review that includes planning, public works, engineering, fire, everyone.
And so without that review though, does it, your staff have one hand tied behind their back and making a recommendation on particularly big development?
Right. And we would probably not recommend support of it because of that, because you can't, there are just too many outstanding issues.
In observation to what, um, our councilwoman has said, I've noticed most of the times with the application, you all send it to all of the different departments for their input, and many times they don't even respond. And that's a concern to me because it takes the whole village most of the times in order to effect the approval process. So, and I believe that when we send something, so let's give an example, to, um, the schools. And it's, we know it's gonna have, we know logically it's gonna have an impact on the schools, particularly if it's a residential project. That should be a mandate that they are required to evaluate it and offer input as to what is the impact that this new residential development is going to have on the student enrollment population for whatever the assigned school district is. And I see many times, and I, I'm just using that as an example, but for all the departments, I, I, to me, I feel that all departments should be providing their input on the application. No one, in my opinion, should be excluded from having to provide input to the planning department. And that's not done. Most of the time it's just not done. And it could be impacting on economic development from their perspective. It could be impacting on redevelopment and housing, on engineering, on utilities, everything. But they, they just don't respond to it. Can you address that? Do you know why that is? Does anybody know why that is?
So there, there's some departments that do respond. So engineering usually responds, uh, inspections usually respond, utilities will usually respond. When we did, um, we, planning did a, a planning one-on-one session with our new council members. Um, councilwoman Thomas actually raised that question, um, with us and, and that, you know, I told you, we meet a lot, right? In, in our teams. And we talked about it as a team, how do we get more engagement, uh, in these processes? And what, what, what's, what's the issue? So some of the things that we heard is that our, our colleagues, our interdepartmental colleagues want more information about the application when we are, when we reach out to ask for feedback. And so that's a, that's a balance because we try to send it out about 30 days before it's, it's heard. Um, and that's really before we've done, um, significant evaluation of the request. But we've committed to do that, um, to meet the needs of, of the people that we are asking to support our efforts. And so we agree with you and, uh, like your comment relative to seeking, uh, post-application feedback, really reaching out to our peers was an effort similar to that. It's like, well, there, there are some that regularly provide feedback and some that don't and why. And so now that we have the feedback for the why, it is incumbent upon us to try to address and meet that need.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir.
I love that you guys are starting into process, what I learned is process analysis. In other words, studying how does the process work? How do they get their applications through? And so much work that you guys do outside of what you have there on the board, you said with the businesses and all the others. Have y'all started into performance standards and, um, process, um, measurements, measurements yet?
You know, that's his middle name right there. Mr. Carter, uh, service level agreements and performance metrics. Yes, sir. We're working on, I, um, mine have not been approved yet.
Have you submitted them?
My, I, I did submit a draft and, um, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. On my team, zoning is doing the best in terms of finalizing their, their metrics, but yes. Yes, you don't, is it, if you, if you don't know where you're going and what the goal is, any road will get you there, right? Yes.
You're welcome.
That's it. He answers time.
Ooh, yeah. About what, two minutes?
Yeah, I'd say we were a little tight on time, so I think.
So thank you all very much. You have in front of you, I hope I didn't see it online.
Yes.
Survey, where we look for feedback about the training, yeah, and, uh, information about what you want next from us when we have time. Thank you so much. Um, the Virginia Chapter of American Planning Association's, uh, annual conference this year is in Portsmouth at the Renaissance Hotel in July, July 20th to 23rd. I'd like to ask that you save the date because some of those sessions are, um, geared for planning commissioners. Um, and so we, we'll cover the cost for that. If you're able to attend all three days or one day, please let us know.
Thank you. Great information. Thank you so much. All right, all, we have about two minutes?
Two minutes.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we would now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Seven members of the planning commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the January 7th, 2025 public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion.
Need a motion? To approve the minutes.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from January the 7th.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the January the 7th, 2025 public hearing, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, April the 1st, 2025, at 12:30 PM, City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. For your information, the Chesapeake Bay exceptions are not required to be heard by the city council. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cell phones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first item, CBE dash 25 dash 01 Hidden Cove. M. Gordon requests a Chesapeake Bay exception to construct a rear addition swimming pool and deck within the 100-foot buffer of the resource protection area at 5998 Eagle Point. The property is zoned conditional general residential and is further described as tax map 903 parcel 22. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low to medium density, single-family residential uses. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzon. Will the applicant or representative for this application, please come forward and present your application at this time.
Good afternoon. My name is, uh, Mark Gordon. I live at, uh, 5998 Eagle Point, and I'm here today with, uh, Mr. Eric Garner, a civil engineer from WPL. Um, before I get going, I, I know you said five minutes. I was wondering if I could get 60? I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. A little bit of levity. Oh, now I got four. Now, good, good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Distinguished Commissioners. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, regardless of the outcome of my request, I, I would like to thank Ms. Malzon for her assistance and responsiveness throughout this process. So thank you. Um, while daunting to me and seemingly complex, she made it much more. And if I could, uh, well within five minutes, uh, Mr. Garner had a couple of points to make, uh, at the end, so if I forget, uh, he may step up. Um, a, a little bit about me, after a 31-year career in the Coast Guard, of which I spent 14 years here in Portsmouth, uh, we decided to retire and try to make our forever home here in Eagle Point. Uh, we purchased the home in 2006, uh, about two years after it was originally built within the Hidden Cove development and at the time, uh, within the CBPA, RPA. Um, and we did not consider when we bought it, you know, expanding the family or nor a future need, uh, potentially to care for aging parents. We love Portsmouth, love our neighbors and believe the addition we propose, uh, and the, the pool will, will keep us in Portsmouth by providing additional room to handle future family contingencies, including a first floor mother-in-law suite, as well as more fully take advantage of the view and, and hopefully contribute a little to an increase in property values. As a longtime resident, uh, current Hidden Cove, uh, that's our, uh, development, HOA board member and then former board member on Hoffler Creek's Wildlife Preserve, I am very conscious and, and deliberate towards our responsibilities in safeguarding the bay. Um, and if helpful, uh, I have provided those, those pictures. Not the best, they're not as dramatic as I hoped, um, but it does show when I moved in, uh, do they have them? Okay. Uh, yeah, it's just a picture of the bank. So when, when I purchased the home, uh, I took a picture of the bank and, uh, you can see there's a, a rope going up that the original owners used to, uh, try and climb the bank. That same rope is still there, but you can see the significant growth in vegetation that's, that's gone up around the bank. And, uh, while I know there are, are many reasons for improvements in water quality and certainly the work of the commission and, and the, the planning shop, uh, we've all seen, uh, a huge increase in, I mean, huge, there were none before in oysters. So, uh, as far as being a good steward, I, I hope it shows a little that we, you know, even with the addition, we tend to, uh, continue to be good neighbors, uh, and, and safeguard the, the bay. We, we truly love it. Um, uh, I certainly, uh, you know, again, a, as I mentioned, would credit the, the environmental regulations. I, I understand where we're coming from, uh, including, you know, your roles in it. Um, I believe our proposal, you know, makes sense as part of that reasonable use and is in keeping with the fact it was already built, uh, within a portion of the 50-foot landward buffer. So we're already in there, uh, leaving me little choice in, in how to expand. My proposal is the minimal available to afford relief to my request. Uh, it does stay outside the seaward buffer, uh, and I think with the implementation of the safeguards, uh, and the mitigation plan with the vegetation proposed, I believe it will acceptably minimize runoff and impacts to the Chesapeake Bay. Um, in considering the deck and, and specifically, um, and the pool is the minimum necessary to afford relief, I, I would note again, I, I don't have an option of an alternate location for those. Um, uh, and still stay, uh, outside of that, that seaward buffer. Um, I do request you consider the deck not as an auxiliary structure, uh, but as part of the addition living space. I think pretty common sense. In most cases, it would be unusual to have a house without some backyard deck or patio space. And as you noted in the, in the working session, um, uh, the proposed mitigation with the vegetation around the deck will, will actually improve, uh, improve, reduce the runoff, uh, from the condition it is, it, the condition it is, uh, now. So, uh, in, in some ways that, that will be an improvement. In relation to the neighborhood, I would also note that this proposal is not an extremely large structure compared to the size of the lot, especially when compared to the size of the structure in the adjacent lots. Um, as the smallest house with one of the larger plots in our neighborhood, uh, this request would put my home more on par with my, with my neighbors. Uh, regarding the pool, even if approved, it's probably, uh, something we would pursue a little bit later. Um, our approach in this was that if something we might consider in the future now is the time to, to ask for it, uh, easier to get it done now than potentially in the future. Um, and while not discussed in the proposal or with the planning department, if there are mitigation options or exceptions that, uh, could be considered, we, we'd obviously be happy to consider them. For example, uh, the next door neighbors, a, as you noted, uh, put their pool within the RPA and used a BPA, a best practice, uh, burms around it. Again, something we would be certainly willing to consider, uh, if that helped to get us to yes. And then I think I heard a question on, on chemicals. I don't know a lot about pools, uh, but if using saltwater instead of harsh chlorine would be helpful. And again, we, we would consider that, uh, as well, if that minimized the chance of, of entering the waterways. Um, and then, uh, really thank you for the consideration. I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Garner. I would, uh, mention, uh, as you think about this, I had nothing to do with your entrance into the building, so keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Yeah. Like Ms. Gordon said, my name is Eric Garner. I'm with WPL, uh, Landscape Architecture Land Surveying and Civil Engineering Firm in Virginia Beach. Um, we do a lot of Chesapeake Bay projects and the biggest, um, proponent that, um, that the Chesapeake Bay is enacting is for water quality. And, um, with what we're proposing today, I think the, the bay will benefit, um, with the addition of the, um, buffer mitigation and restoration that we're adding along with potential, um, avenues, um, that I'll kind of touch base with real quick. The biggest thing, um, you, you guys mentioned the existing deck. The existing deck does not have any, um, erosion sediment control or any plantings around it. Um, the proposed plan would have a, um, the new deck would have a gravel and sand subbase and then would have a, um, a planting perimeter around it to help capture the runoff and, and treat the stormwater before it does roll into, um, into Hoffler Creek. The other item that, um, Mr. Gordon mentioned was the, um, the BMP that, um, that was around the adjacent pool to the neighbor. And what that is, is that can be, um, we are not, we're not proposing that, but we can certainly add that if staff recommends that. And if you guys approve the project, what that would do is that would capture any runoff. It's a, it's called a BMP or best management practice. What it is, it's, it's a avenue to, um, that you dig out the, the soils, you amend the soils, and then that allows for the water from the pool surface to infiltrate into the ground quicker before it rolls directly off into the, um, into the yard and, into the, um, the adjacent creek. And so, um, last bullet point I want to bring up, um, this plan, this unit, you, uh, this community was developed as a planned development community. It was approved in 1997, and with that approval, there was a, um, an encroachment to the Chesapeake Bay that was allowed up into the 50-foot landwork, which we're, we're projecting to do. Although there was an amendment in 2009 that took away or that added on to the, the requirements for that, uh, if prior to 2009, we wouldn't have to, we could do this administratively without going to the planning commission. The only change now is that we've gotta go here. And so it was approved, but since the, the law changed, we're, we're having to go through it. So I don't think we're asking for anything that, that, um, the city nor the, um, the staff expected, you know, when they approved in 1997. It's just that, you know, things change over the years. Mr. Gordon Baldwin in 2006, if he had the, the purview to, to build in 20, 2006, he would have, it would not have appeared here, but since it's 2025, it's been quite a bit. So, um, with that, I just ask if you guys have any questions or any comments for us to answer while we're up here? If not, thank you so much for your time and effort.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Back to the pool. Would there also be the opportunity to put a, a fencing, a nice appealing, say white fencing around the pool itself?
Yes, uh, yes, absolutely. And I think we'd be even required to, to have that for safety.
Add that around it, immediately around it with an ingress, egress into, going into the pool?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, uh, uh,
Right, because that does provide safety precautions, because you find a lot of times, in fact, it was in the paper this week about the little toddler, three-year-old, and what occurred. So just personally, that is something I think would be favorable.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, as a parent and a neighbor, that's, that's an absolute nightmare, everything we could do.
Oh, my God, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioners? Okay, Madam Secretary?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Would it be okay that, I know Commissioner Glover gave a little insight on her concern in the private session. Could you repeat that one more time, if you don't mind, please?
Are you talking about the deck?
Yes.
I don't know if, if both of you were in there. My question was, you mentioned sand, rock, whatever that was going underneath the deck, and one of the major concerns, obviously, is the runoff, and I get that you're planning on adding additional vegetation around it. Would it be conceivable to do like a shade-tolerant ground cover underneath that as opposed to gravel?
Excuse me. So they have tried that in the past, and one of the things that the Chesapeake Bay ordinance has adopted is the sand and gravel underneath it. The, the maintenance and the care of vegetation underneath the deck is, is difficult to achieve and maintain. The granite and gravel, excuse me, the sand and gravel will not, will not require maintenance over the years. It will, it will rough out the vegetation, and that's the best way to prevent the runoff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Could I add, Ms. Glover, to your point, I don't know if it came out, but the deck is currently on a slab. So in addition to the ground cover and whatever we could do underneath it, it would be an improvement over what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-25-01. I have no registered speakers. If there's anyone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Is there any more discussion?
I just want to be clear on, I just want to be clear on just the aspects, not that I have a personal relationship with the applicant, but I would ask that our city attorney, Mr. Miller, would you just briefly address what constitutes a conflict of interest as we prepare to vote? What would con, you know, just for future items that will come before us, as well as this one today? So our commissioners, all, we're all understanding what would constitute a conflict of interest as we vote now and in the future?
Sure. Well, a, a conflict of interest can, can range in, in various aspects, but essentially, it's if you have a contractual or a financial interest in the subject of the application. And then, and that's the situation where we'd ask that you disclose that, and we could advise on how to proceed.
Do we also include family relationships?
It depends on the nature of the relationship, how close, and whether or not they reside in your household.
Thank you.
Sure. Is there, is there any other, any additional discussion? Okay, if not, we are in need of a motion and a second?
I so move that we accept the application coming before us, the CBE-25-01.
Is that with, with the recommendations?
With the recommendations, but specifically, I want it accepted for the pool, with the pool included.
For all three portions? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Is, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion and a second to approve the CBE-25-01 with the recommendations as noted in the staff report, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today?
That is correct.
Commissioners, will there be any further business?
Chairman, we need to let us know about the, the annual conference that we have coming up, they better know.
That is the day. I can't.
For, for the record, the vice wanted to make sure that we were, continue to be made aware about an upcoming conference, so that he can enjoy his birthday as, as well as attending the conference with us.
It's on July 23rd, in case anybody want to know. Thank you.
I do also want to take this opportunity to welcome our new commissioners. It's great to see such a full dais up here. It's been a while since we've had this many commissioners active, so we look forward to the contributions you all will be making in the future. That being said, Dr. Russell, is there any further business?
No further.
Okay. Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.